Okay, we're opening the meeting for the Planning Board, February 5th, 2020. Sarah, is everybody okay with their taxis?
Yes.
We have the minutes. Get any comments?
Uh, yes, they're all set.
They're all set. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved, oh. The December meeting.
We have a motion to... They'll do one at a time, so the December meeting?
So moved.
Hold on, favor. Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the January meeting.
So moved. You say second.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Okay. The agenda for tonight, we'll start with the first, 2020-2. Then it'll be 2019-19. And it'll be 2020-1. And 2020-3. 2020-4. 2020-5. And 2020-6. So we're starting with the first, 2020-2. Forty-eight Kingsley Close. Do you have any issues with this?
So I think, uh, John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, uh, we made some changes to, uh, reduce the, uh, impact of the construction and we sized the, um, the stormwater system that was asked. Um, I don't know if there was any other addition. I don't know.
You gotta repeat it.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, Representative Edelman's. Uh, we made some modifications that were requested, uh, to reduce the impact of the construction. Uh, we've changed the construction entrance so that there was no removal of trees required on the north side of the property. And we added a expansion to the existing additional improvement service.
Is there any new lighting?
There is no additional lighting now.
Okay.
I'm not sure, no. I think I saw some...
You may have serial toward your clothing.
The light, the lighting is...
Under the deck.
Oh, under the deck. I don't think, there's addition, there's lighting, there's lighting shown on the, uh, the deck level.
Right.
And that's exist, it's a replacement of existing lighting, so, yeah.
So the resolution says it has to be, uh...
Oh, dark sky, yeah.
It has to meet the new ones with clothes.
Dark sky, yeah. We do, we do dark sky typically.
The resolution will reference that and...
Yeah, we're fine with that.
You won't be surprised.
No, yeah, it's fine.
You have a resolution, uh?
We can do all...
Oh, we have any comment from the floor? Any comment from the board members?
No.
You have a resolution?
Yeah. Where is in... Where is in February 2020, Leon and Sarah Edelman applied for site development plan approval to construct in addition to their house at forty-eight Kingsley Close. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated January 6th listed a number of engineering issues with the proposal, all of which were addressed in the subsequent submission. Suzanne Nolan, the villagers' landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated January 6th made two comments, which were adequately addressed in the subsequent submission. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on January 8th and February 5th. It's a type-two action under CECL and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved, with the Planning Board's grand site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Edelman Residence, the various sheets prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture, subject to demonstrating that all outdoor lighting complies with the villagers' new out... And here's a copy of the lighting regulations.
Any comment from the board?
No.
From the floor? We have a, uh, a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on, favor. Aye. At number two on the agenda is, uh, 2019-19, sixteen North Aster Street.
Michael Lewis, Michael Lewis Architects. Uh, basically, we met here a few times before, so we were just, uh, trying to address, uh, a few remaining items. In particular, the, uh, short environmental assessment form was revised. Full drainage and stormwater management system was updated. We addressed the neighbor's concerns in a letter, and I think she's here today. We can discuss that further if necessary. We were also before the, uh, Architectural Review Board and addressed a lot of those concerns there and had some discussion. And, uh, you know, the drawings have been enhanced, uh, since our last review here with additional elevations, sections and details throughout the building, uh, as we were at, as, you know, presented to the, uh, Architectural Review. A lot of the configuration in the rear that was the subject of some of the discussion with the, with our neighbor, uh, Ms. Lomalino. The one outstanding comment from Han Engineering regarding, uh, stormwater management, uh, I'll defer to our colleague here, Ubada.
Ubada from Hudson Engineering. With regard to the one comment regarding the pipe and the drainage management, we just have to confirm that it has a slope of at least, I think it's 1.3 percent. We're pretty confident, given the elevation difference between the rear and the front yard, that we have that slope.
You can straighten that out with the building to pump.
Yep.
Does, um, Lomalino, Ms. Lomalino wanna, wanna come up and then she has a letter here and I can read the highlights of the letter or... You, you said, uh, he said that he had discussed with Hugh Lee. You need to come to the microphone for, um, discussion. Did I pronounce that right, Lomalino?
Yes, thank you.
You can identify yourself, Chris.
I'm Christina Lomalino, and I own twenty North Aster Street, which is the property immediately to the north of sixteen North Aster Street, so we share a property line. Right now, the rear of the property is entirely enclosed with a building which is, uh, proposed to be demolished. Uh, this is my yard, and this is looking at the wall, looking south from my yard. So you can see it's a substantial wall. Uh, and it really almost fades away, there's... In any event, my concerns, uh, are several, but one of them is to retain as much of the privacy in this yard as possible because the new proposal involves the creation of outdoor space, including a commercial unit with an outdoor patio. So, uh, my concerns have to do with sightlines and maintaining privacy in my backyard. The project architect has mentioned that the new, uh, proposal involves retaining a wall at the same height. In other words, this wall would be demolished and a new wall at the same height would be put up, which will, uh, improve, uh, the situation in terms of the privacy on their side and the privacy in my garden. And I've been told that the same height, uh, I went out and measured it and this wall is now nine... grade here. So I would like confirmation that the new wall would be the equivalent height. The composition of this wall is another issue. It's been suggested that it would be red, which I think would be somewhat jarring, and I would hope that we can have a discussion about something more subdued, uh, on this stucco wall, uh, which is not visible at all from the subject property, from sixteen North Aster. Uh, so that's one topic. Another topic also has to do with the sightlines involved. This is the rear of my property. These are, uh, both houses that were built in the middle of the eighteen hundreds. This is a civil war, a little townhouse. And the second floor has a deck. And because, right now, it only looks out on a roof scape, which is relatively benign, this is the view from, from there. And you can see that if this wall were built at the same height, it's only, uh, a short wall when you're on this balcony. So here, I'd like to know what are the sightlines into the property and from the property up here? So, uh, I was wondering whether the project architect and the applicant would consider some sort of remedy here that would, again, retain the privacy that we have now.
What is that supposed to be? Can I ask, is that, are you proposing, sorry, are, um, is it outdoor space on a flat roof, or is it...
Oh, this roof will be gone and there will be new outdoor space here. There are two four-hundred-fifty-square-foot patios that would be built right at the property line. That for the rear of the property. So while we don't, I don't have any objection to the project overall, my concerns have to do with retaining the seclusion and privacy that we have now. You can see, this is a sort of, little bit of an industrial benign roof scape, but soon there will be activity here in the open air. So I'm wondering whether there can be a solution for the people using this, uh, deck so that we're not observing each other in the open air, which would be a new feature introduced by the project. Another thing has, another, uh, issue has to do with the fact that on this side of the wall, there are trees and foliage. And I learned at the ARB that there will be scaffolding put up on my property so that this wall can be built. And I'm just wondering what will happen to these trees and would the foliage and the landscaping be restored at the end of this project? I think that's it.
Well, just off the top, before I ask the architect to... Scaffolding is going on your property, you have the right of saying, "No," I would assume.
I'm aware.
Okay.
I'm attorney.
I, I know we covered this before in the previous meeting, you left a lot of sightlines and so forth, but using the demonstration of that, uh, the only way you used here, could you show, uh, address our concern, please?
Yes, sir.
Especially the roof, the, the second one up there.
Yes.
I had the impression that, of what, the patio is gonna be considerably lower than the roof, but I'll let you explain that.
That's, that's correct.
Which one do you want to look at?
That one.
Yeah, this is the deck here, and that is the roof that will be demolished here.
Right. So, um, um, Ms. Lomalino is correct that the, uh, the proposed, the top of the new wall is at the same height as the existing side wall. The existing side wall, you know, supports a roof. The proposed wall will not be supporting a roof. The proposed wall will be freestanding and will be about twelve feet high on the side of, uh, sixteen, on the south side of the wall. Space is, is down about twelve feet below the top of this wall. We're completely...
Let me, let me get it clear, that, that, I think she said that wall is nine feet?
This wall is nine and a half feet from grade.
What?
From her grade, and it's nine feet. On the other side, it's a different situation because our floor is below her grade. I can show you.
Oh, okay, so it'll be essentially the same height?
The wall will be the same height. And I can show you a diagram that shows the sightlines.
Okay.
Basically, the, the outdoor space on the other side is, is much, much lower than this roof scape is.
How much is much?
Twelve feet.
Oh.
I believe, I'll, I'll show you the section drawing that shows it. So, uh, really, uh, this is sort of, she calls it a deck, but it's really more of a, sort of a fire escape situation.
No, it's not a fire escape at all.
One more time, please.
I'm sorry. It's the de... It's by the second floor.
You need to speak to the microphone.
Sorry.
It's the outdoor space, uh, the deck that is used, uh, by the second-floor apartment in this building.
Right, so, uh, you know, I think it's kind of like that, turning away the door. Some of this space is basically looking over the wall into the space to the south. It's really not the other way around. The people from the south will have a very hard time seeing this space, but from here, from this side, looking over, they'll be able to sort of look down upon the patio space, and that's okay. We're, we're okay with that. So I think it's a, it's actually a very good situation. For the, this wall, uh, that we're talking about, of course, is part of the sixteen North Aster Street building. It's a frame wall that's... Four years old. It's rotted, deteriorated. The exterior finish of it now is, uh, wallpaper, felt, number ten felt, which is falling off of the rotted wood. Uh, it's a complete mess. We're proposing to replace it with a masonry stucco wall. Uh, it's true, we were proposing brickyard red for the stucco color because it matches the brick of the building. But, uh, I feel confident that if, um, if we were to discuss an alternate color for, uh, for the red red, that would be fine too. It doesn't, uh, it really doesn't affect anyone but, but you. And, uh, if there were a different color that you prefer other than the brick color, um, no problem. We can color the stucco any color we want to. So I think, you know, we're going to end up with a much nicer, uh... To address the, the pump jack, uh, the scaffolding question, we talked with a contractor. We're, depending on reasoning, a contractor who's very experienced with this sort of work and he's proposing the use of pump jacks, which really do not, um, need any bearing area to speak of in the adjacent property. The jacks extend into the property about three feet, but they, they're, they're, uh, basically are the least impactful, uh, method for this sort of scaffolding and won't be tearing up the, the ground or the plants on that side. They'll basically be working integrally with the construction of the wall, so it's pretty respectful. Along with that, of course, um, you know, I think we'll be, uh, we'll be getting permission from the neighbor to, to, go into that space when this work occurs and be very respectful of... And, uh, proper protection to make sure that, um, that it's, is, it causes as little impact as possible to you and your tenants as we would in any project in any situation where we're dealing with a neighbor. As far as the sightlines, can I can show you? Here you have the, uh, the first, second, and third floor plans. You can see that the gardens are on the second floor. Basically, we've demolished the third floor of the building, so the gardens are set down. These two gardens against the property line are set down at the second floor level. Here's a section that's cut eastward through the building from the south side of the wall, looking towards it. This is the demolition plan, which shows the existing wall. The top of the wall is here and the roof garden is here. Angles down a little bit at the back. And you can see her grade comes down, uh, where she measured, measured nine feet and is probably near the building. That grade continues up until it's actually quite high. But meanwhile, you can see where the second floor is, and here's the proposed, here's the proposed, uh, deck at this level with the newly constructed masonry wall at that same height. So her, the balcony she was looking at is over here. She'd be looking down in, but none of these people will be able to see into her property at all. And, and the, uh, the heavy masonry wall will also act as a sound barrier. Uh, these external spaces are, um, are designed to be planted, uh, they're designed to be garden spaces. And one of the reasons that they were incorporated into the design, this building was sort of recessed into the hill, it was very enclosed on both sides, so there was no light getting into the second floor, rear of the building, so from here back, it was pretty dark. And we, and we determined with the, and it would be better to, um, to lose some, uh, floor area, lose some enclosed space, and drop that floor down and have a garden so light could flood into the back of the building and illuminate the back of the building and provide a garden. Better to have less space of a very high quality than more space that was dark and, and closed in. So the impetus behind these gardens is really to bring light and quality into the space, not to provide any sort of, um, outdoor, uh, meeting space or, um, or area that would be disruptive. The two gardens, uh, one of them is, uh, is at that level. One of them connects to the residence apartment on the second floor, and the new one connects to the commercial space in the far back. So, um, again, I think that's sort of, hopefully that describes the, the situation there. So, you know, our, our, our visualization of the project and our belief is that it'll, it'll be terrific for all involved, the neighbor and, and the new tenants in the, uh, in the proposed spaces.
You might wanna add that, uh, your perspective, from your balcony, right now, you're looking at...
A roof.
A roof, okay? What he's proposing is this is all going down, greened, and there's a facade back further. So the impression of being on your deck now is like you're at a roof. You're not gonna feel that anymore. You're not gonna feel the space as a benefit to you, uh, so.
Well, I do have a sense of benefit to you. What I would like to say is that my...
Microphone.
Oh, visual benefit to you because, uh, I would, I would tell you that, uh, for me, that balcony is going to be improved by what he's doing, not because of what he's doing for you, but just because of the result of, of what they're doing.
Well, right now, this is a commercial building with no residential space, so any commercial activity that occurred at this building was encapsulated by the building. Now, there is a newly created commercial space with, with an outdoor area.
I'm gonna cover that in a minute, so stick with the sightlines for the moment.
Yeah. I have questions about the sightlines particularly because of the newly created patio at the property line that is part of a newly created commercial space. I think a commercially-used area that is new could present some issues. And that's why I've come to the meeting.
Well, you got the commercial area. Did the, um, it's a business, zone business, and the zone business allows for a restaurant. Uh, it's in the business, uh, zone. And, uh, it also says, uh, and I paraphrasing, Mary Ann, you can help me with this, that the activity must be in the building fully enclosed on all sides. So if there is, if there is a restaurant...
Not just restaurants, obviously.
Any business.
Any business in the business district has to be enclosed, yeah.
Any business in the, one of the regulations to the business district is that any business carried on there cannot be carried on outdoors. It has to be within fully enclosed space.
Well, then what possible use would there be?
Use the microphone.
I'm really sorry, I forget.
Then what possible, uh, reason would there be to create a...
I don't know. ...space with an outdoor component attached to it.
Well, because...
Sitting area.
Maybe employees would sit out there doing lunch. And what you can have is, if you, if you have a restaurant, you can't have the outdoor cafe. Or if you've got, um, some kind of a clothing store, you can't have, you know, sell your stuff outside. You cannot have the commercial use out there.
Oh, so this patio cannot be used for a commercial use?
If there's a commercial use, according to the code, it has to be fully enclosed on all sides.
Well, is my concern that at some point it would be an outdoor cafe or a restaurant or a shop?
The code cannot.
Oh, it's interesting.
Any other, any other comment on the board?
No.
Is there any comment, other comment from the public? Now, we have a, I'm, I, I think we're satisfied with the sightlines, and, and I, I agree with Mr. Boyle here in that looking at the... If you really stood on your toes and looked down on a planted patio, it might be better than... And, and, and they're not looking at you, you're looking at them, so.
Thanks.
We have an environmental impact statement?
Right, what, yeah. Well, we don't have the environment, we've gotta do the environmental review on this. And it was included in, in the packet, um, from Mr. Lewis, but I can just, I can just ask the board, the, um, there's a lot of questions, um, and I think we can check them all, even though it's small impact. Will the proposed action create...
Do you need a microphone to do that?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? The answer to that is no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? If there's any... So you, you check, if it's either no or small, you check it. Will the proposed action appear the character or quality of the existing community? If anybody, if anybody thinks it shouldn't be no, say something. Okay. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics across the establishment of a critical environmental area? You know, that would just be the Hudson River. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? The answer to that's no. Public or private wastewater treatment utilities, that's no. Will the proposed action appear the character or quality of important architectural or aesthetic resources? Anything that improves it by, um, renovating the building? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality? There's none here. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Okay. So if you agree that all those answers are no, you can, um, issue it. I'll, I'll make the negative declaration part of the resolution.
You need to make a motion, approve it or...
It's included in the, the resolution of approval.
Here's the, this form is the, um, the negative declaration. So you should sign it, maybe sign two, and we'll give, um, the applicant one. Oh, this is, this is when you, Michael, okay.
Yeah, I will.
This is when you, oh, you, okay.
Okay, uh, we're done there, Deb?
We're done with CECL, yeah.
Okay, there's two, two questions I have. One is on the utilities. You're not gonna have electric meters and gas meters on the front of the building, are you? You're not going to have electric meters and gas meters on the front of the building, are you?
No, so we'll show you where they are.
Because it might be just after straining out of there.
No, Mike, we can go over that later.
You can go, I want it signed on the front of the building.
Not on the front of the building.
Our, our concern is, we don't see six, see six meters for the gas and just, what, sixty units? So, but we, we go over there offline.
And, and the existing wires that are, are in front of the building, they're gone?
That's right. Under the electrical service.
Are you going to have lighting on this building? In the patio?
Yes, ARB. And
Well, yeah, we have a new code.
So unless there's proposed lighting, I can describe it to you if you like.
Just as long as it's, meets the code here.
It's to be dark sky compliant?
Right. It's, it does.
But didn't you have some uploading, uplighting?
We don't.
It's on the plans. Uplighting at the pergola.
Well, sort of. It's under the, it's under the cover of the pergola, so it's not I don't think it's, it's shining out.
Okay. I just saw the uplighting.
It's basically have a pergola with lights on the coast. They're lighting, it's lighting the underside of the pergola, but it's not shining out.
Any other questions? On the floor?
Well, I just wanted to confirm that the height of the wall at the property line to the north of sixteen North Astor that borders my property, that that will continue to be nine and a half feet tall from grade on my side. Because you mentioned it was 12 feet, and that would mean that your dropped patio was only three. So I'm a little confused about that. It was, did you say 12 feet and some inches on your side? Because once the wall is demolished, it will be hard to establish making it simply as high as the now demolished wall. So I just wanted to confirm the height from grade, from my garden.
While he's doing that, Mary Ann, if you could cite the code on the commercial
Two twenty-four thirty-six.
So that, I
Two twenty-four thirty-six.
Well, Manina, you want to, to confirm the fact that it has to be within the walls of the building? Code is?
Two twenty-four thirty-six.
So Christina?
Yeah.
The, you can see here. And this shows the merits at the same point. And in fact, your existing wall, it gets at the back and the shit goes down. You can see your grade. And so right here, if someone ran that roof, they could literally step over onto your property. The new proposal runs all full length of the thing. So in fact, you get increased privacy in the very back of the lot. Now, your grade at the back is not nine feet. Your grade at the back is about, you know, currently it's about two feet. And then at the front, it's nine and a half. I, I assume based on what you just said. And so this line is held all the way to the back of the property. So your, your, your privacy is going to increase in the back.
I understand what you're saying.
One more time, please.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't see measurements on this particular drawing. So is this nine and a half feet at this point?
Here, here it is.
And that's 12.2 on your side. I'm asking you here on my side. But I don't see that on the drawings.
We're not showing the, the wall from your side of the property, but we're showing the normal aligning to where the existing wall is. And we're showing that dimension. So it's, it's shown on the drawings. It's shown on the drawings right here, the height of the wall at the same height as there. And the intention has been from the beginning to match that existing point. It's always been shown that way.
Can you confirm it's nine and a half feet over here?
One more time, please.
Can you confirm that it is nine and a half feet? Because 12 feet on your side, I understand, but I don't care about that. What I care about is what's going on on the other side.
I think he said it's going to be the exact same height as the existing wall. So if the wall, the existing wall is nine feet, if he puts it the same exact height, location on the building, it's going to be nine feet. So I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I hope that won't be the case, but in my experience, once the demolition occurs, confusion can occur as to how high that wall was that is now gone. So I just was seeking confirmation.
Saying the same level?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So here's a datum, okay, on the second floor. And he's saying off of that second floor, there's a dimension, correct? Off of these drawings, there one
Twelve feet two inches.
Yeah. So one could, if, if he was to build that wall, he is saying he's going to build that wall off of his second floor, 12 feet two inches, okay? He can't go over and measure your side. That's for you. What he is saying is, he is saying that that's going to be the same height as what it is right now. And the dimension is being based on his property.
I understand. This is newly created here. But I think I've taken this as far as I can. Are we in agreement that it is approximately nine and a half feet at this point?
I haven't
Why do you have to use the microphone? Because it's a gun.
I'm sorry, Christina. We haven't measured the height on your side. You told us it's nine and a half feet. And if it is, well, then yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a resolution?
This one's a little more involved. Okay. Whereas in September twenty
The resolution's going to refer to the lighting.
In September 2019, Jackson Striano applied for site development plan approval to demolish and remove most of the interior of a three-story building at sixteen North Astor Street and reconfigure the building for mixed use and to install stormwater management system. Whereas the building's a contributing building in the historic district and is located in the view preservation district. And whereas the proposed renovation would include two parking spaces inside the building, requiring the elimination of one on-street parking space on North Astor Street in order to create access to the interior spaces. And the Board of Trustees on October 7th, 2019, adopted a resolution permitting the elimination of the on-street space. And whereas the modifications to the front of the building require Architectural Review Board approval under the Historic District Demolition Regulations, which limited approval, which limited approval the ARB granted on January 13th, 2020. Let me just clarify. It says demolition, but in, the way demolition is defined in the historic district is just changing the front at all. So he's not demolishing the front, but he's making a change. That's why he needed that approval. Whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated September 3rd and October 2nd, 2019, listed a number of engineering issues with proposal, all but one of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. And whereas in a submission for the February 2020 meeting, the applicant submitted a waiver from Connet to permit new natural gas service to the property. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 4th and October 2nd, 2019, and February 5th, 2020. And the proposed renovation would not impact the view of the Hudson River from adjacent properties or rights of way. And whereas the planning board received and took into consideration two letters dated September 30th and December 4th, 2019, from Christina Lomalina, who owns the property adjacent on the north. And whereas the proposed renovation is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the planning board has reviewed the environmental assessment form and determined that the project would result in no significant adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board issues a negative declaration under CQ and be it further resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled modifications to sixteen North Astor Street. The sheets are identified, prepared by Michael Lewis Architects and the stormwater management plan prepared by Hudson Engineering and Consulting, subject to, one, complying with the item listed in the Han memorandum dated January 31st, 2020, and demonstrating that all outdoor lighting complies with the village's new outdoor lighting regulations.
You get one, and Mary Ann gets one.
Thank you very much.
Number three, twenty-twenty dash one.
We are teaching all?
We are.
It's all in favor?
All in favor. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Second, all in favor? Ah, someday I'll get used to this. Number three, twenty-twenty dash one, 121 South Broadway.
Good evening. I'm Lou DiMasi. I'm the architect for the applicant. We were before you last month regarding a deck in the rear of the building. It was 50 square feet, pretty unusable deck. So the owner would like to knock it down and build a deck that's about 218 square feet, located in the rear of the property. We had comments from Han and Behring that I have addressed, but there was a couple that I still need to address. And one other issue that just came up. When we were doing the lot coverage calculations, we noticed that the existing property was already over on the lot coverage. So increasing the deck made us increase the size of the lot coverage. So we're going to have to go for a variance.
And your lighting?
Lighting is minimal, required by code. And it'll follow the rules for lighting.
This has to go to the ZBA, which will, we think that's fine, go to the ZBA now. But prior to going, you have to figure out your coverage.
Oh, you worked it out.
You worked it out?
So I'm comfortable with something from the ZBA.
Okay. So off you go.
Great. Thank you.
What, what did you do?
Yeah, you
You gave your resolution, such as what I got?
You got a resolution, Mary Ann?
I do.
Magic.
If you're ready, jump into the public.
Any questions on the public? Any questions at the board?
Whereas in January 2020, Erika Goizweta? Okay. Applied for site development plan approval to replace a deck on her house at 121 South Broadway with a larger deck. And whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated January 6th, listed a number of engineering issues with the proposal, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. And whereas the proposed deck would exceed permitted coverage and therefore requires a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on January 8th and February 5th, 2020. It's a type-two action under CQ and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Deck Plan for Erika Goizweta, prepared by DiMasi Architects, subject to, one, receiving a coverage variance from the ZBA. Two, complying with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated February 4th, and demonstrating that all outdoor lighting complies with the village's new outdoor lighting regulations.
Do you have a motion to, do you have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Wait for the resolution. Here's the lighting.
We'll move on to number four. Don't go away.
With that one, the ZBA is Yeah, put Sarah Paul in the morning.
Okay. When we might along to number four, twenty-twenty dash three, 340 South Broadway. On some of the agendas, it was listed as 240, but it's 340.
It is. Good evening. Matt Behrens. I'm the architect for this application at 340 South Broadway. The application is to modify the existing stone wall that borders Broadway by opening it up and setting it back slightly from the road. The reason behind this is to make it a little bit safer to get in and out of. It's pretty treacherous right now. The idea would be to match the wall. There is required to be a slight increase in lot coverage because the new wall will be slightly larger.
Part of the application is also to, it's very good one.
Sorry. To expand the driveway to the rear of the house.
It, it, is, what's the need for the large expansion of the driveway?
Well, because of the, the house is pretty close to Broadway. And because of the, the wall and now setting this back, the driveway gets a little bit tight. So they wanted to just push it back a little bit more so they had a little bit more room to turn around and get out of the driveway face forward as opposed to, you know, sometimes having it back out or anything like that.
Isn't, can I ask a question? Isn't the, if you push the wall back, it's not going to be in line with the rest of Broadway, right? So you're saying
It's not, but there are other
I'm worried about that.
Okay, sorry.
Of course. So there The color of the wall is not allowed to be moved. Mary Ann?
Yeah, let, let
There are other modifications along Broadway that we're trying to replicate.
I, I know. I've seen the scouts. There's two scouts. By code, the, the wall, unless you meet the two criteria for exception, which you're going to, if, if you want to look at it, we, having looked at it, I don't think you do. But you might have some information that I don't know of.
Yeah, let me read you. It just, it's in the, the stone wall section of the code, which is under, it's in the streets and sidewalks part of the code rather than the zoning code. And it's an article on stone walls. And it requires planning board approval for, for removal or modification of stone walls. But there are limitations. Removal and modification of stone walls may be granted under the following circumstances, and there's two listed here. One, if the stone walls are weakened by age, storm, fire, or other injuries such that they pose a safety hazard to the public or the person or property owner, or threaten to cause disruption of public services. And two, if the stone walls, or wait, this is the other circumstance. If the stone walls substantially interfere with the permitted use of the property such that denial of a permit would cause undue hardship to the landowner as determined by the planning board under the site development plan process. This, this applies to stone walls on, on, on Broadway and certain streets in the village, including, hold on. Yeah. It, it applies to any walls abutting Broadway and some others.
Now, you want them to try to fit something into those. We're not going to discuss, we're not going to discuss now because there are other issues that need to be settled also. There's no, number one, there's no drainage plan. And I looked at it from the sidewalk, so it's hard to tell. But the topo is really not sufficient to tell whether you need fill to bring out that new driveway up to grade.
Yeah, there's only, you know, a two-foot slope that goes across
You're going to have the driveway sloped? Or you're going to bring it up to grade with fill?
No, we're going to, it's going to be sloped. It's going to be, it's going to be leveled. But it's, it's minimal regrading.
Well, what's minimal?
This is, this is a, like a, I'll do the calculation when it's a this is two feet across
Are you going to need a wall back there, retaining wall?
No.
All right. We, we need to know that. Plus, there's no drainage plant and there's no planting plant to shield the new parking area.
Okay. There, this is all well vegetated and screened. There's also a fence here.
You got a, you got a neighbor up to the back.
Yeah. And this is also well screened too. The whole
I was out there. I didn't, I don't know what you mean by well, but I didn't think it was well.
I can provide an area.
Okay. Any, any, any comments here?
I think this was here years ago.
Yes.
And there was a smaller opening.
Correct.
And then they said, for the same reasons, they opened it up.
Right. Wasn't good enough.
Wasn't good enough. Okay.
Because what they need to do is, is be able to get a car coming in and a car coming out. Because what happens if somebody's coming out? Somebody needs to get in, which has happened a few times. They end up having to stop on Broadway, which can be pretty treacherous.
I just know, I remember being here and then driving by there all the time. Like, man, I don't know if they ever opened it up.
They did, yeah. Yeah. But they wanted to keep it small because they didn't want to feel like the house was on top of Broadway. They wanted to maintain the privacy a little bit. But in the end, it was probably not the right thing to do.
And we do have the map survey from 1954?
Survey's old, yes. I saw the, the comments on the survey. I think what I'd like to propose is if we get the approval eventually, and I understand there are questions about that, that we provide an updated survey as, as a condition for closeout. Because if we submit a new survey, it's going to be outdated once they do the work, so.
And, but you didn't show any soap fences in it. It slopes away to the, to the neighbor, to the, to the west.
It looks the way, yes.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we don't want the soap
Yeah. Okay. We'll add soap. Where we go to the driveway.
We need a drainage plan, which is very critical.
We'll put that in.
You, you might need to survey sooner if you're going to go have the driveway and get some spot topo in the proposed driveway area.
We, we need a cross-section to see what kind of grade that's We need a cross-section to see what kind of grade that's gonna be moved in. I couldn't tell from the sidewalk, but it looked like it sloped away and that.
And how it impacts with how the, if there is a grade change or feathering out from the driveway, how it affects the tree roots of the existing tree.
Well, that was the plan, to feather it out, not to.
Yeah, but including the trees that may be on the neighbor's property, if you go that far.
Okay, so again, I'm jumping the gun a little bit. We're gonna put a trench in the back and then feather it down and then have that tied into a very tight.
Okay, any other questions?
I think the thing that the slope, it's really like dumb numbers, it's like one to third, so I think it's.
And you need a topo survey.
It's not that extreme. There's no nine-foot retaining walls in the back, is what I'm trying to say.
It's pretty flat, I mean, I think that's what you're saying.
Can you have the questions from the floor?
We'll provide you.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the feathering out becoming a major problem, the tree roots.
Okay, so we'll make sure that we're far enough back. There are some trees along right here, the idea was to originally go almost to the edge of that drip line of those trees and then pull it in a little bit.
And you need a planting program.
Well, I think the only thing that we're gonna be doing that we're planting is.
Planting around the driveway.
It's all there, I'll show it to you. It's, there's a fence along here, and this is pretty, like I said, it's well screened, but I'll show you an area.
Okay.
But I guess, I guess the big question is, if you can't move the wall, do you still want the?
I think if we can't move it back, we still wanna open it, yes.
But you can't.
What?
You can't touch the wall. I didn't understand, which is, if we can't move it back, we're just gonna open it?
So they can't open it either?
No. Read it again.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought, because I heard, I thought.
Several modification of stone walls.
I thought you were saying you had to keep it in line with the wall.
They moved it, they got approval years ago, maybe because everyone just felt okay.
I don't know, I mean.
It is this property, right?
Yep, it was two thousand and six, I believe.
But like I said, you're welcome to shoehorn something into the two exceptions.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give you the section from, sorry, the first page.
One eighty-four dash three. Chapter one eighty-four dash three.
Okay.
All right, see you next time. Anything else we should be?
Maybe.
Number five, on the agenda twenty twenty zero four. Hi, Barbara Lang. Barbara Lang.
Good evening, Nick Faustini, I'm an architect. I did bring a computer, but I'm not sure.
Oh, sorry.
If that's set up. It may not be necessary, because I also wrote this.
You wanted, whatever you wanted.
I just have photos of the rear yard, if you wanted to see them, but otherwise, this is the plan that we had submitted. I can just start with this, I can come back to the photos. It's essentially replacement of an existing deck. The deck was already removed previously, years ago. I'm just gonna, this is the property, front yard, rear yard, sides. Our proposed new deck is a replacement of a portion of the deck that was previously removed. The deck that was previously removed extended from this corner all the way across. It was three times larger than what we're proposing here. This deck is about eight feet above basement level. There's a walkout basement right here, and the deck is proposed at first floor level. We have a cross-section here, just to give you a sense of the height difference. It is only about three feet high above the rear yard, but it's a full story above the basement. It's fifteen by fifteen, pretty standard construction. There is a retaining wall that wraps around the bottom of the deck, and it's an existing railroad tie retaining wall. You can see it here, and we're just proposing lattice to close in the bottom of the deck between the retaining wall and the deck itself.
What was your construction access?
Construction access for the, the deck.
Oh, with the piers in the deck.
So we have three piers.
How are you gonna get to the back of the house?
You would just, you can come around here, it would pretty much be carried in, everything. The three piers could be done with augers, they're just twelve-inch diameter sonotubes, and then the lumber would be set in place with a beam, and then we have joist that can get to the house.
You don't have any, it sort of slopes, I forget which is east and west, but to the right, but what you're looking at.
Slope's in this direction.
Which you need, soap fences to protect it.
So we showed a silk fence here and.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna have access and trucks going in, you need it all the way to the curb.
Okay.
Did you say you're gonna do this all by hand?
Yeah, this would probably be done by hand. It's, it's just.
What about your concrete?
The concrete could be mixed on site and brought in.
Okay.
It's a relatively small project.
Now, I don't, I don't recall, you know, that you had a raised deck there before, it's just, right now, it's just gray. So you would need some planting to screen that raised deck. And there's coverage calculations that are an issue. You want to show?
How is this set up?
Yeah.
So I did not see the original deck, but these are the DLB records, a short certificate of occupancy. For the former deck. We just got, again, this is from nineteen ninety-eight, it's no longer there. What we're proposing is replacement of this area with the stairs down, but this was the original deck. And then going back to the photos. So this is what's there today. You can see the remnants of the original deck, there's this existing railroad tie retaining wall. Our new deck would essentially be directly over the footprint of this retaining wall. It is about three feet higher than the grass area here, so we would enclose the lattice to the bottom of the deck. I'm just showing a photo of the rear of the house. This is just a photo looking towards the rear yard, front of the house and the side, just for a sense of the rest of the house. A good part of this would be screening on the underside, just by the lattice.
Yeah. Coverage calculations just need to be tuned up, the air finishing pads, the top of walls, all included in the coverage.
Okay.
See where it lands.
Sure.
I think you're fine, it just, it has to be right.
Sure, I think we're at nine percent for the house.
Has to be right to approve of that.
Okay.
So if we're called, if you don't understand it, but everything counts for coverage of the driveway, so tops of walls, even all of them.
Okay.
Right, it's out, so we can say it.
Okay, we'll fine tune it.
And you have to show.
If you have a little fence.
You have to show planting around that, about bottom, that's what you need.
Some evergreens for me. Yeah, we can propose some herbivities if that would be acceptable.
Herbivities, the deer don't eat herbivores. Let's get it, they don't eat herbivores. Okay, come back.
Okay.
Anything else? Any comment from the field, from the public? Any comment from us? George, anything? Come back to the calculations and the screenings.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is.
How do you?
Don't shut on you, shut you.
Next one is twenty twenty dash five, fourteen, Bertha Place.
Hi, everyone, Mike Martorelli from Michael Lewis Architects. We're proposing to put a covered structure on a portion of an existing patio in the rear of this house. We got the comments from Han Engineering, and we will look into those and update the drawings accordingly.
Just to go over, then what, you have to demonstrate the preservation is okay, which it probably is, but you need to demonstrate that it is, and you're talking of correcting the coverage increase?
Yes.
And part of the existing patio is not documented?
Right, so, yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. You have to fix all this before you can go to the zoning board.
Right.
Any comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? See you next time.
Thank you.
Last but not least, twenty twenty dash six, under two, Heritage Hill Road. We don't have to, we like to have things.
That's why we serve.
Right of the meeting, but, yeah, for what it's worth, we'll, we'll get it. You'll be coming back anyway.
I saw these comments.
Let the record show that we accepted a legacy garden, two Heritage Hill Road, a series of photographs, which were previously not given to us, but we're accepting them because this project has to come back anyway, so we have that.
Is it okay if I sit, so I can work this thing?
How do you want it? You try to put the sheriff to the table, so you can.
Oh, sure.
You have that to do more.
Is there music?
There is no music, though.
I might shut them up, that falls out.
Screen is blank right now.
So then I'll plug it in.
It's my sample. It doesn't necessarily.
There it goes.
Okay, cool. So, this is the Bin's residence, well, first Pat Steinsteiner from Gotham Design, the team that's working on this, Amanda from Planet Wild, which is kind of a cool name because Planet Wild. We're also, all the engineering's been done by Hudson Engineering, and the architect working on it is Roro Wickel. She's worked on several projects with us before in the village of Rorleton. So this is where it is, I think you guys know perhaps better than I do, but you drive all the way back behind the high school, you go up, it used to be Marshall's Pond, Marshall's House, and.
Marshall's Pond? Still Marshall's Pond?
I agree, but it's not labeled that anywhere, so maybe we will do that. And we understand that they're wetlands in the pond, and we have to deal with that. This is the existing house. What we're proposing to do is to build a couple of additions on the house, one at this front corner, where the deck is now. This is going right into that corner, we actually will bring the steep-slept roof that's to the left, make it symmetrical on the right, and that will tie into the tower that we're building. This is the other side of the house, what we're looking to do is where that sloping roof comes down and engages to the other, we're changing that whole roof configuration so that it's gonna eliminate where they're getting the drainage problems right now with rot, and we're also building a fireplace at that point. The drawings, you guys obviously have them, I just included everything that was long in our set, existing conditions, this is the existing condition of the site. One of the things we're proposing to do in this is to eliminate some of the paving that's in front of the house, so that the lawn will be improved. We're eliminating the loop in the driveway, and here is the site plan, and actually I'll just go to a kind of larger version of it. So what we're doing is cutting out that one section of the driveway, keeping the upper section, looping up into where we build a two-car garage, have room to back up, have two cars parked there as well. The main purpose for that paved area was the twenty-four-inch maple, contour three ninety-six, is there's a lot of problem with MapQuest and all the Google Maps and all that, so on a given day, they will get two or three FedEx trucks that drive up and have to turn around somewhere, so if we're, so right now, what they do is they loop around the driveway, which is not really ideal, so what we're doing is we've provided so they can pull up and back up and go back out. Here are just, you know, all the calculations for the floor area, which I think we're pretty good with, I did get the Han Engineering comments, there's some adjustments we have to take a look at there. One quick thing is ten thousand, it isn't the percentage of the area once you hit ten thousand, right? It's ten thousand's the maximum. So we showed ten thousand as the maximum, they said it's actually ten thousand and change, but I don't think we can have.
Would this work for the coverage?
Yeah, the floor area.
The floor area?
Yeah.
Are you over ten thousand?
No, we're much smaller, but they wanted us to correct it on the thing, I just, we'll go over it.
Yes.
Make sure it's right. Site coverage, we've got an interesting situation because we're such a large lot. Eighty thousand square foot means that we're operating under the one F eighty in the one F twenty zone, so technically we are, or, you know, by code, we are over in coverage by about, I'm guessing it's around four, so about six hundred, seven hundred square feet. So we're gonna have to deal with that, either eliminate components or we would, I guess, have to go for a variance for that, is my guess. Thank you. Well, here's just a drawing that kind of shows where we're doing the additions. The hatched area is the interior space that's being added to the house, plus terrace, plus the deck on the first floor, and you can see in the upper corner there where we have the small addition that's being made, what's now the kitchen, which becomes the living room, and then on the second floor, this is the second floor of the tower form that we're proposing, which will be a meditation space. This is the larger scale of the plan. Basically, the program is a simple one, converting the kitchen into a living room, converting the living room into a kitchen with expansion, with additional space, you could have like a harvest table, plus keeping the dining room, and a real screen porch, it would be a seasonal room, it'll have no heating, it'll have no panels, it'll just be screened. Second floor, again, the minor modifications inside the master, so that that gets a little bit bigger, and then the meditation room. Here are the elevations, there's an issue with the height. We were, I don't know if we're misunderstanding it or we weren't doing it right, but we were coming out to where we were gonna be okay because of fifteen percent grades in the building envelope, but what we have done since then is we've taken a look at changing that, so when we submit for the next meeting, our plan is to have it be where we are compliant with the thirty-five-foot height maximum. We also are proposing a garage.
Push that retaining wall profile, there you go.
Yeah, this one is gonna probably drop, I saw the comments from Han, that we're showing that at seven, that can come down, we can actually drop the grade around there so that whole area fill gets reduced, the.
Wait, wait till you see the wetland setback.
Right.
Before you comment. Because if you see the wetland setback, you're gonna be doing something else.
Okay. Okay. Retain walls can't be in the...
I think you're doing something else if it's in the wetlands, Mike.
Okay, good. This is the garage. The south-facing roof is a roof of solar collectors. And then this is just quick. I'm not asking you to... I'm just kind of confirming that the direction we're going to go with shortening the roof and bringing it down into compliance. And I think that's pretty much... Well, this just shows, you know, we're going to have the surveyor pick up the actual edges of the pond and show the setbacks. Right now, we're 18 feet from the pond to the property line, plus we've got the 15-foot on site.
Based on a satellite?
That's why I mentioned first that we're going to have the surveyor.
Yeah.
Do it, right? And then that's as much, pretty much as much as I have to do. And then we can let Amanda show you all the pretty pictures.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Bailey, landscape architect in the state of Connecticut, landscape designer in the state of New York. This is our plan for the Heritage Road. This is a very special site. This plan is showing you a hybrid habitat restoration meets high-end design for a typical suburban lot. We're proposing best management practices for improving the ecological value of this site. What does that mean? Well, let's start with the mini reforestation that we're proposing. Wish I could show you at the same time the site plan as I go through these.
If you don't throw the board back up again, stand back.
I'm being useful.
Thanks, Patty.
It's a little for me, isn't it?
You left yourself quite a...
I have to comment.
Okay, so this mini reforestation area is happening in this location here of the property. And what we're doing is proposing a grid of three-foot-on-center tree saplings, one or two-gallon trees. Yes, it's a very small size, but instead of proposing larger trees, we're following more of a habitat restoration practice where you plant more small trees. They're growing healthier and they prevent, they help prevent invasives from coming in because when you have a connected canopy, you prevent, it helps prevent the spud of invasives. I can't even talk right now. Okay. So you have a dense canopy of trees and so it's hard for your Japanese barberry and your Japanese honeycucul to invade that environment. So we're proposing a thick density of reforestation trees at a smaller size. I saw the comments today. Thank you for reviewing this. And our revised plan will be showing you a planting schedule with quantities in addition to species. This is all 100% native plant species proposed. We're proposing maples, primarily sugar maples, in this mini reforestation area. Let's keep going. This is the heritage shrub happening over here. And we are being very sensitive to the existing mature trees on site and the existing vegetation. And even using that as a precedent for our design and using an understory of native shrubs that would accompany those mature trees of pine and oak. And so we are proposing an understory of celeria and eastern redbud and St. John's wort in this area here. This will also help to screen the new garage. Okay. Next is more, this is showing you the perennials. We're always putting in plants that are going to have some value for wildlife, winter, spring, summer, and fall. So we have our trees, we have our shrubs, and we have our ground cover and our perennials. There's always something happening. This is more of the plants that we're proposing. Again, in our revised plan, you'll see these listed on the plan. Next is showing you the front beds. This is this area here, kind of adjacent to the new driveway. Then in front of the deck and the house, these are old wood, but they're also a more formal look. So we are looking at different textured plants of sumac and sweet fern and gold spear. Again, plants that will look good, but will also provide habitat value. Father guira, inkberry. Next is our pollinator hill. And this is kind of the senior spot of the property. Here, we're using plants, again, spring and summer. There's always something for a pollinator to eat. So we have the early flowering, the wild columnine, the wild duranium. We're putting in serviceberry trees. Those are the circles shown here. So we're actually adding six serviceberry trees in here. And we're calling it a pollinator hill so that you have... We have very different, unique areas happening throughout the property and we want this to be pollinator hill. Okay, next is...
More pollinators.
More, what did you say?
More pollinators.
More pollinators than you could imagine flying here to Heritage. Even more plants proposed, mountain mint. Next is our fern range. This is the shadier site. And again, this is native plants. I didn't mention that up here, we will be providing American hollies to help screen the property from the neighbors. And again, these are native plants. These are, we're proposing a gathering circle or a fire pit area. And this is not going to be impervious area. This would be gravel that the water can drain through, which might be considered, I know some towns consider that impervious.
Average. We, Irvington definitely counts all of it.
Okay, I am, actually, I serve on the conservation advisory council for Cortland, that I'm really impressed. And I'm going to get those night sky regulations for Cortland, by the way. Okay, next is the discovery trails. There's this beautiful mature beech tree and we want to, it's right out the back window as a sightline. We really want to respect that tree and the beauty of it. And also, we've saw, again, that understory that's just been devastated by deer and invasives. Instead of proposing kind of a hiking trail-ish trail back there. And interesting is the seed and compete idea. There was a lot of Japanese stoaguss, which is yet another invasive species. And so we are doing battle with a very aggressive native ground cover. So our proposal is to seed and plug native species to out-compete that Japanese stoaguss in this area and to regrow that forest. More native plants, native plants, perennials, shrubs, trees. This is the micro garden. Again, what's so special about this site is its adjacency to Irvington Woods and the Glacial Atrocks in Irvington Woods. And bringing that aesthetic into our site and calling attention to it with this existing outcrop. And we're going to plant little mini plants within the interstitial spaces of it, such as that wild columnine you saw before. So planting that throughout there. And bird viewing corridor, we are right here now. And this is where Marshall's Pond is. There's a lot of bird life there, adjacent to that water body. And so we're planting shrubs to support birds in this area. And finally, woodland buffer is in this area. And this is to provide, again, we are reducing our lawn area. And we are doing that by this hatching. This crosshatching is showing you a row-mow seeded area. What that means is whereas this was conventional turf grass, we're removing that and adding in a grass that you only mow once a year and requires no watering after it's established. If they sign up for Planet Wild maintenance, we won't use any pesticides or synthetic fertilizers. Very cognizant about any water leaving the site and draining into that wetland or that pond. But we're adding a woodland buffer here to further enhance that habitat value of woodland with shrubs and mountain merries and ginger and winter berry. This is that no-mow grass I was talking about. And then we have a wildflower cutting garden proposed right off here in the major viewing point of the yard with tons of more pollinator-friendly plants. And we will work with the client to figure out what's a great fencing option for that. Might be one of these that you see here. And then that's it. Are there any questions on the landscape or...
Is all that clearly identified to us?
Right now, this is a, no. It's not identified as, we can make it clearer for you. Which I saw that in the comments. So we have just put the plant schedule here, but we need to match the plants to where they actually go. This is our first pass at doing it. I wanted to really, before driving into too much detail, get a sense of where we were going. But we provide you that.
Of small detail, you said, presented that February 4th.
Oh, no, I saw that, Patty. Thank you for that.
There's a lot of issues. First, I'll just go things that are missing. No drainage plan.
Right.
Wetland permit, water cost permit. No silt fence is shown. If eventually shown, it's very steep slope, it should be double silt fence.
Yep.
Before we get into the trees, any comments? Oh, there's a height and far and coverage issues that you have to settle with that.
Yep.
Can I suggest we just do this in a kind of block way?
Yeah, well, let's do trees now.
Well, let's, if you don't mind, let's talk first about the last thing that we saw, which is the landscaping concepts and stuff like that. And so, you know, I was enamored by your title, which is Plan It Wild, as opposed to Plant It Wild. Okay? So yes, all the things that you're describing and all the little events that you're doing here are very nice for the applicant, for the house, per se. But I was struck by how many trees you're taking down. Okay? And so to me, it's like you're talking about all these pollinators and this and that and stuff like that. That's fine. But the idea that you're taking down these wild trees, large trees, not small little things, you know? And when you said for a FedEx truck, I gotta believe there's a better way to do that than taking down a 24-inch maple or whatever it is.
Yeah, we're not taking any trees down except over by the garage that are not trees that Wayne Ghili has determined are...
Yeah, I read his thing. And that was different than what I think we're used to. And so it was very, you know, sort of, trust me, I know what I'm doing, kind of attitude.
Very much Wayne's.
Which at other projects, that's when there is such an enormous amount of trees that are taken down, typically we ask for someone else, someone from the village. I know on that one project we did where there was concern about a tree. It was over near Hoffman's house.
Oh, yes.
You know, and stuff like that. But, and I would think you'd want to do that, okay? Because if the spirit of this is to try to plant it wild, okay, then it seems highly contrary to be, you know, well and away on these trees.
So...
So I reacted to, you know, at first, this concept of the FedEx thing. That's ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. So no, I would tell you that that's not appropriate, especially in keeping with what these other aspects are. The other thing I would be concerned about is, although these are very boutique-like events that you're creating here, what is the overall effect based on? You know, you don't want to have this area where it's all sort of natural and then you come in and done this little turbo test tubes of natural things, that someone needs a sign to tell them what the pollinator thing is or what this is that. Is that you don't want it to look like a kind of a green museum, that someone has to kind of describe these things. The idea here is to try to keep this as wild as you can. So I think you have to figure out a way to make it so that, at least for me, that I'm walking by here, I'm not going to, I'm just going to say, wow, it looks nice.
Can we comment on your first one?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're taking down 11 trees. I hate taking down trees. Four of those...
Before you go, let me amplify what Mr. Boil said. I personally, I don't know about the rest of the board, I don't feel very good about taking three or four trees down for the solar panel. And there's three or four other trees on the property to amplify what he said that are not impacted by construction or otherwise that are coming down. And I just had on our property 139 trees evaluated and they're all in some form of...
Decline is where they...
Decline, because they won't.
It might not last for a whole 50 years.
And that's a reality. And even hollow trees don't have to come down.
I agree.
And recall what I said, that in terms of the garage with the solar, I just don't believe in taking three or four big trees down for the solar panel. That's not going to save the world.
We, one of those trees that are coming down are Norway maples. The thing about a Norway maple is that it is invasive and nothing can grow under it. I do not like taking trees down. I revise nature ordinance for Cortland. I hate taking down trees. Every single tree that we have an X through was very well thought out for why we are taking that down. So there are four Norway maples that are coming down. The other trees that are coming down are because of Patty's change in the architecture. I agree, we have many hollow trees that we're leaving standing. That is food for insects and woodpeckers. And you leave a tree standing if you can. We may take down a tree that's going to hurt human life or structures. Absolutely agree with that. So we're taking in 11 trees and four of them are invasive. Four of them are Norway maples. And it's better to take those down than to leave them. There was one idea, which was to, you can do a snag where you kind of suffocate it. So you leave that standing and you kind of put a rope around it and you choke it to death. We were considering doing that to take some of the Xs off the plan, but found that that would not be safe, given how close that tree would be to the house. So we decided to not do that.
So I'm just looking at your notes here. So what you're trying to say, if I understand this correctly, is you want to take down these trees because they're invasive, right? But what you want to really do is you want to take these trees down so you can do your events, your little moments that you're proposing. And I'm looking at it from the bigger picture. I'm looking at it from the village side as opposed to the applicant side. And we've had several people come in here and said, oh, we want the tree down because we want to put a pool here, okay? And we can't put a pool here if there's a tree there. And most times, we say no, that you find another place for it.
Especially if the tree is going to cause shade on the pool.
I...
So the other thing too is that, and this gets into planning, okay? That the location of that garage, what you're talking about, is that's been put there. And in order to do that, several trees are coming down, okay? And that, to me, is sort of a mistake that should be relooked at in terms of not having to address that. And to understand the wildness of what's up there to begin with, invasive or not, okay? Because you're not going to go and choke all the invasive trees in that area. You're just not, okay? So that's, to me, is this is about being sensitive and surgical about it.
Absolutely. We are, the only thing about all the moments in that sounds...
So you're going to look at a different place of the garage?
I'll definitely get a look at that. And, you know, we'll try and come up with a plan, working with you, working with Laura, and also working, I mean, when you noted that there were so many missing pieces, that's all really Hudson Engineering. They just weren't ready to have it in yet, but I wanted to get this conversation going before, instead of waiting until they have it. They've guaranteed we'll have it for the week.
What do you feel about the trees, Hillary and Dan?
It's, I don't know, it's a special, it's a special piece of property for me. I've been up there for years. So, and I know that's a large piece of property and it's overgrown and, you know, it's a new owner who wants to do different and new things. I think you have to be a little sensitive just to the area because it's very wild and it's large. You have to take a wheel, what do you think?
I want to comment on the, this idea that there's a lot of many different things going on and that this is not going to be wild. This is going to be wild. This, the whole theme of this is based off of Irvington Woods and the plant communities that we see there. We're taking that, we're putting it here. So we don't need signs everywhere saying Pollinator Hill, whatever. I was trying to walk you through it in that way. I was trying to walk you through it in that way.
No, but I think what you'll see if you were to, based on your site plan, is you have several different moments throughout this whole thing, okay? Where over here it's this, and then over here it's over like that, and then over here it's like that. And they're very programmed, okay? They're very programmed. That just doesn't exist there, okay? That's, that doesn't exist there. So all I'm asking for is that you're a little bit more sensitive about what the existing conditions are and meld those in together so that it doesn't kind of overpower that, oh wow, I have this house that has a ton of lights on it and these others don't. So you need to kind of, kind of dance more with what the existing conditions are from a landscaping perspective.
I think that, I mean, I agree.
Following up, it's not like the azalea garden, the botanical gardens were just continuous azaleas. You want to maintain some of the wildness.
Right.
Another thing with working with this client is from day one, they had mentioned, we want this to be kind of a showpiece for the community. We want people to learn how to do it right in the suburbs. And so responding to that, we did create those moments, even though they're wild and within, you know, the aesthetic and feel of Irvington Woods, we're doing it here, but we are creating a lot of little moments. So we can definitely present it and share on the plan in a way that, to respond to your comments.
Well, part of it too is that if you're going to take a look at the garage and maybe relocating it, then you won't have to take down all those trees that are around. So that'll make a, you might have to do something else over on one side or...
That's the offset. Unless we were put the garage in the middle where the grass is, it's kind of, it wants to be along on that hillside. And what we've done is positioned it so the trees that are being affected are the ones that would be most sense to affect as opposed to the other ones that can stay. So we'll, but we'll take another look at that. If I can make a quick comment, because I really, what George said is pretty much, you know, I never said this to you, but it was the same read I got in the first, which is it kind of started feeling like to me I've walked into a department store and there's the J Crew thing and there's this thing and there's all these different things kind of categorized. But then, when I looked at it more carefully, I realized what she's done is artificially created the concept of the places, but the reality is it's seamless. So the material from here blends into the material there and it's, it is the material that you find in the woods in Irvington. So the idea of bringing that and emphasizing it on the site, I just think it sounds like it's a really good way to approach it. And one of the things, I mean, right now, we're, you know, Sustainability Task Force in Dobbs, we're doing a lot of stuff with Irvington as well and with Chet and the whole idea of the pollinator pathways. I think, you know, that's in and of itself something that we should really be trying to accomplish with this. It's a good demonstration project.
Right, no, I think that, you know, the landscape, I mean, the thought, you know, that what you've included and how your idea, I think it's, it's amazing. I mean, it's very thoughtful, it's well thought out. Is it, is it maybe, it maybe is too thoughtful, too thought out, you know? But it's great. I mean, it's, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of need to it.
Thank you.
So trees and garage are two things I've definitely heard.
And remember, taking trees down for the solar panel is not something I personally would, might agree with. And you have plantings in a lot of locations that's electric grass a little bit. But if you were to put that retaining wall up because it's in the buffer of the wetland, if you weren't going to put up a retaining wall, you need to put some screening in front of it.
Sure. Yeah, I would comment too about the trees, removing the number of trees. Again, oops, I too am concerned about removing the number of trees as mentioned by my co-members here. And to, the solar is very good, but again, to knock down trees to justify your solar was a little questionable. But again, needed to an extent.
And you do know you need to go to the DROB for the solar.
I don't think there's any place that I don't need to go in Irvington.
Now, the other thing, just thinking about the solar, you know, there clearly is other places you could do this, all right? So by taking down trees, it's sort of, again, gets into the same ethos that I reacted to, which is like, oh, I want to have solar, so I'm going to cut down these trees.
Yeah, we didn't approach it that way. We tried to find a place that the trees that would be affected by our putting a garage and solar in would be the ones that would be, you know, almost like putting value on each one. I found, I think Wayne Cahilly's work is really interesting. I don't profess to understand it well enough. So the idea of having, the village having something becomes the other side of that conversation, I think is a very good idea. I'd like to, you know, when he had those ratings on the different trees, it took me a while to figure out that the high numbers might be because it's going to fall in the house, not necessarily that it was a tree that had to come down.
Well, you're talking about, you're talking about the risk of the top six high-risk trees, you're only taking one down.
Right.
Which I didn't understand. But you get a copy of our landscape architects' comments?
Yes.
Caesar, I just wanted to tell you that on that, Suzanne talked, called me yesterday and she had a lot of concerns actually with that, with that tree report. And I think she was going to ask for a...
Right, she went through an extensive review.
Yeah, so she'll be in touch. In fact, I'm going to give you her email address so you can send her that what you handed out tonight.
Great.
Because she, we do have a landscape architect on this. She just didn't come to the meeting.
Well, you got our comments.
Yeah, I got my comments.
They're quite extensive.
I saw a lot of the comments, thank you. The comments were primarily about the tree evaluation report, which is Wayne Cahilly to make his revisions. I saw the comments about tree preservation. I absolutely agree with all of her comments. And yes, the revised plan will show...
The specificity of...
It will show you the, it will show you the plant schedule and...
You already mentioned it.
Makes sense.
I think, another thing, I mean, you're seeing big axes and 11 trees coming down. We're putting in like at least 50 new trees here. And I know, like, I know that those are mature trees.
10 to 45 inches then?
I absolutely understand that.
The canopy is a little different.
I, you're talking to a tree hugger, so...
One thing that I think we might want to do, I don't know if we're ready to do it for the next meeting, maybe the one after that, would be the sidewalk. Because I think some of... Well, okay, but if we're not going, if it's not...
Once we know where you're going, once we know where you're going, you're out.
Yes, spring, yeah, right, spring is already here. Yeah, no, but, I mean, in terms of your comment about spring, it will be spring by then. So yes, that's fine. So the idea of being able to assess some of those and see what the difference between this one and that one is. I mean, we're using judgment on it and it's not, there's no, as much as the numbers are great, it's something, to me, it's much more you stand in the yard and look at the tree. And that's why a lot of the ones that were cited as being damaged or dying or declining, I didn't see any reason to take them down, you know?
That's my feeling. Because when I had, I probably would have a 10-acre site. It's like 150 trees, 139 trees. Out of 139, 138 had some form of decay.
Right.
But not worth taking down. So you could say, oh, this has decayed, I'm going to take it down. But is it decay that it has to come down before it falls down?
It's, I mean, I go way back on this. I mean, we have limits on our conservation easement in Dearman Park that we can't even remove the trees after they come down. So, you know, so it's there for nesting and bugs and everything else. So I think that makes sense, that's fine.
If we, you know, can we not talk about the rest of the... So you can talk about the retaining wall, okay?
Yep.
Patty's been here before. Patty understands specifically about some of the conditions that I've expressed before, especially on your projects up here, about the size of retaining walls and the concept of the fill of trying to make these flat areas, which again are so anti-wild. So I don't see them as working with your concept either. So the idea that you're, that you're going to flatten an area for bird viewing for your clients, and to do that, you're going to put in a tremendous amount of fill and have a seven-foot-high retaining wall, seems to be completely opposite to the spirit, which I, I'm trying to say, I'm in on the spirit. I just don't see it in how it's being shown.
Right.
So I think you have to be a little bit more careful about what you present versus what you're saying.
What we can do is we can kind of give a comparison of what's there and what we're changing. There is existing wall there now.
Correct.
So, but our idea was to take the existing wall, which is coming here, and just move it down.
Move it out away.
So that you can walk...
Closer to the village's land.
So you can walk around the house. And it's not really, it's not...
What I always do with these things is I always look for the perspective of the village. Not the perspective of the applicant. And on this one specifically, you know, that's an area where it is natural, okay? Has been natural, will be natural. Will not have you go in there to make it even more highlighted and stuff like that. And that's a place where people from the village are going to be. So for me, I'm worried about how's that going to look next to you, okay? How am I going to feel when I'm inside of there? And I want it to be that it transitions into that. I, I'm all for you doing however hard you want to do where you are, but there can't be this like wall that says, here is me and this is what is slapped over on the other side. So, no, I would tell you that I am not a fan of what you're proposing to do there.
We're talking about this wall here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Plus you're taking a tree down to put it down.
No, we're not taking a tree down to put it down. There's a tree that is at, I mean, it's at about a 30-degree angle hanging over where people walk.
But what's the hazard number on it?
Okay, great. I can put, I can put the same note on that that I put on these others. There's a number, there are trees here which we have circled.
It would just shock me that a tree at that angle wasn't one of the higher priority trees.
I think it's a dangerous thing. So, but what I've done is I can, I can put the same note on it. We've got two circles that say, Village of Irvington, tell us whether you want us to take this tree down or not. We don't see a need to take it down for what we're doing, but it's a tree that's in decline that's right over where people are walking. Do you think it's an issue of concern? So that's something that they're willing to do if it's something in the interest of the village. I mean, obviously, I don't know if anybody can be more familiar with, you know, how this all came about. So the idea of that trail going through there, I think is great. The one comment I'll say is there's, there's natural and then there's another version of natural. Marshall Pond is not natural. Marshall's Pond is a swimming pool. It's a, it's a concrete and stone structure that was created for, you know, this, for the estate, for the Sterns Estate. It's great and it's a really wonderful thing.
Yes, I'm not saying that this is, when Christopher Columbus came here, is it like that. No, what I am saying is it isn't like right here, okay? It is, it is a place that people know and people have known for a while, okay? And hopefully for a much longer time.
Yep.
Okay, so again, I go back to, I just want, you know, for me, I need to see the spirit of this being interchased. I like that and stuff like it, but much more sensitive to what the surroundings are, okay?
He may not be able to put the wall up because of the wetland.
Well, Patty, you know how I feel about these walls, especially up there and especially when the public is below them, looking up at them.
Expression says the wall is up on a steep hill. So you're looking up a hill at a big wall.
I fully appreciate it. I'm usually on your side and I would be saying the same thing. I know. And it's a fine, balancing plan needs and egress on that side corridor. And of course, seeing, you know, from your standpoint, I understand. So we can, we can revise that.
Any comment from only one public?
Well, we have two public people, kind of.
Any further comment from the board? You got anything, Dan?
I'm good.
We went over the fact that you've got details to do.
Yep.
The cover, the coverage, the height, drainage plan. The drainage plan has to include the disposal of water.
Of water.
Of water.
Yeah, we got great perks, by the way. I was really surprised. You got 18 digits.
Mark, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to...
Mark, he has a microphone. Well, you've got to understand, everyone's getting in trouble with the trustees if we don't...
We will spend hours trying to...
Yeah.
We can transfer.
Okay, I'm not speaking as a trustee, but just as a local resident on this one. And that is, I just want to make sure that the plant list is examined for deer viability because there are a number of those plants that I know from experience are deer food. So they may not be in other locations, but in Irvington, in that area, along the reservoir, along Herrman Road, they are in fact deer food. So someone just needs to look at their relative risk factor for some of this local stuff.
And we do have our number of deer.
Can you respond to that?
Go right ahead.
Thank you for that question. Deer are overpopulating Westchester County. And there are some plants that they tend to eat less than others, but every plant can be eaten by a deer. With that said, we have proposed a maintenance plan where we have ongoing deer application and deer repellent. And we have alerted the client that deer are a huge problem in Westchester County and we are definitely top of radar thinking about that.
Anyways, from my experience, you know, the program of relying on deer repellent is good until it isn't. And a lot of times it's because of weather conditions that you can't reapply soon enough. But there are various sites that give you relative risk factors like the, no, I'm just thinking.
New Jersey, Cal, University of New York, Jersey.
Anyways.
Buckers, they have the deer, they list A, B, C, D. We reference that. Even those are getting eaten.
Yep, so anyways, and the other thing to do is to talk to, there are some people around as landscape designers from, that have a lot of experience with what is and isn't being eaten locally. So it'd be useful to probably get some of their names and talk to them.
We have a lot of experience in housing there and we are proposing plants that, thank you for your comment. I'll just be quiet. Thank you.
Joe at the Harvard Service does a lot of the deer repellent stuff, so if you're going to buy it, buy it for him.
Buy the five pound?
Oh, you're absolutely right. It's, he'll tell you too. It's like, it's quite residual. If it rains, it's gone.
All of our, the new trees that we're getting, putting in will have cages on them. And when the trees grow to a five-foot height, they're above the deer. So we are, for our reforestation area, proposing cages around the trees.
Now, the other aspect of deer problem with younger trees is they rut with the antlers and they break the bark off and the tree is dead.
And we, I mean, we are proposing native plants in a deer-infested county. We're crazy as designers to do this, but we are doing this. And we have to keep this, we keep pushing the mission forward because we know it's hard, but...
Ed, is this the right time for me to talk about the silver wolves or that's...
Whatever you want.
Future, well, we'll bring that up later.
I think we're done. We're done. You got something to add?
No, I was only to...
For this project?
For this project, no.
Thank you. All right, we're done. See you next time.
Sounds great, thank you.
Mark, close the meeting?
Meeting is closed. You have a motion to close the meeting?
No, we're...
So now the meeting is closed.